We'll go ahead and get started. I've called the regular meeting of the village of Almanville Planning Board to order. Please stand to the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn the phone over, Paul. Here.
Yes. Johanna Bag.
Here.
Mark Jenkins is not here this evening. Donna Freeman. Chris Greer.
Here.
Andrew.
Here.
Kevin.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
And John.
Here. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the July 25 meeting. And I wasn't there, I don't think Terry was there. Wasn't there? Did we have a recording?
Eddie, Donna, Kevin, Johanna, and Andrew.
We sent our commentary ahead.
Yes, and it's really good.
Any questions or comments on those minutes? Someone made a motion. Who's there?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes at OY. Because I wasn't here. But we have to say as corrected, right?
Yeah.
A second.
All those who were present in favor?
Hi.
Folks, carry it, thank you. We have new business, which is the Folks Island subdivision. We did receive digital copies of the plan. And you also have a small plan here. If anybody wants to see the big map, it is here. We have foregone delivering packets to everybody's houses out of a public space of little white. But the digital copies. This is essentially a continuation of the work that's already down there. And you want to make a presentation?
Good evening, Tim Correa, Ryan Williams, and Romans Lancer Bank. Yes, I'm the surveyor for the project. I apologize, I wasn't here for the initial preliminary plans and all the initial projects for what CHA did, all the engineering and everything initially. But we are...
Thanks to us.
Oh, okay, thanks to us. But we were asked to go out here and get the subdivision plan in order. Specifically, this one's an eight-lot subdivision, where the two apartments that are existing out there are on Lot 12. Lot 11 are where the townhomes are going to be placed. And then you have the 10, 5 through 10 are on Sheet 2, which is where the single-family lots are going to be along Lock Street. This is in accordance with the original plan that CHA did. And they're looking, specifically, there's a single-family home going in. I think I'm Lot 8 right now. So we're trying to get the subdivision done up so that they can finalize that specific house. And these other lots need to get created because they have existing structures on there. Right now, it's all in a big tax parcel.
And as I understand it, because I said I wasn't here way back when, Terry, you were here. This is part of a PDD, a Plan Development District, which had what you see. I did get a call from the mayor today asking about the path, extending the path that is along the riverfront.
Extending the path from...
I think you can see it on the...
The pedestal. Sheet 1 does show it. Are you saying extending it down along the lots 5 through 10?
The idea, I think, was to make it connect all the way to basically the point. What becomes the point.
Woods Street.
Yeah, Woods Street. It looks like a camera head.
That's called Harvard's plans.
It's funny, that's who I got my plan from. It wasn't on every... Typically, I got the plans from Clough Harbor, who gave me the plans to make my final plan. For some reason, it doesn't show up there. But I'll make sure I get it and I'll add it to Sheet 2.
It's on, I believe, it looks like a path right away on up to Lot 11-ish, more or less. And then it would continue...
It continued, yes. It continues down through the residential single-family lots. That's what it was.
Is that through all of them?
It ends at Woods Street. So it ends between lots 5 and 4.
Oh, okay, so it went up here.
You're missing it just from here.
I see.
And then this there isn't.
I see, okay. All right. I can add that.
I think the last four lots are not included.
Is there a reason for the last four lots?
I don't know the history. I wasn't here then. So I went through the file today and it was one of the concerns that was brought up last Thursday from a couple of board members. They did not see that extension. So from looking at the plans, it seems to show it everywhere except for the west, from Lot 5 to 10. It looks like the other one, maybe it doesn't really go anywhere in particular. Although I think that's the old joint property there. That's the old highway garage area, I think, in the...
Are you talking like lots 1 through 4?
Yep, 1 through 4. It doesn't show a path there. It does show something that looks like it might be an easement.
Sure looks like it.
But I'm not, but you know, the plan I gave you guys was from the original approval drawings of 2015.
Is there a paper street there by any chance?
I doubt there would be a paper street. But there is a line there that looks like it could be an easement line. Although it could be a setback line. It gets kind of similar to the setback lines on Lot 5 through 10. But I'm not sure. So I've got to go and see if there's a better plan available.
Yeah, I think the setback line, if I recall, this was a long time ago, that it was thought that the connection to Wood Street made more sense because you could continue walking up, you know, to other areas that would have sidewalks. I think this was kind of a dead end and that made it a loop, if I recall.
It looks like we're taking quite a good size right away there.
Yeah.
So maybe the intent was that we wanted to, we could build sidewalks there or something like that.
Of Wood Street.
But I do, I just did not get a chance to look in detail of the original PDD drawings. Which I'm sure we can, we don't have electronic, I can scan them and get them to the board like Mary can to you guys.
So for tonight, are we looking at just the subdivisions of lots 5 through 10 or 1 through 10?
No. We're just looking at 5 through 12, as far as the...
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, 5 through 12, which goes to the end of the existing apartments.
Correct.
Is this the original, like the roadway that goes through there? Is that the original?
Yeah, that's where the existing Lock Street and original road is. They haven't done anything, I don't believe, with that proposed road down through lots 1 through 4. And I think that's specifically the reason we're not including 1 through 4 yet with this plan. They still have to construct all that infrastructure down through there before we can go for approvals on those lots.
There was a specific phasing that was approved. So I'm not sure if that exactly relates to the phasing that was approved.
Internal, internal, yeah. And as I'm looking at this, see, this one goes like this and continues up here. This one continues up here, this one continues up here. So I'm pretty sure it was a continuation of the path running up each of those streets on sidewalks. And this was kind of like the road to nowhere.
You're right.
We're just looking at the...
You consider the pedestrian walkways the accessing the resolution, for example.
Yeah, as I'm thinking about it, this one went up this street, this one went up this street, and this one went up this street. And this was like, no one's walking down there as part of a continuation.
So the cat conflated sequence of development. And there's a timeframe, which of course COVID kind of shut that up. "The project will be developed with an anticipated build-out schedule in phases. The construction of the apartment buildings will proceed as soon as financing can be obtained. Developers shall make application for financing as soon as practical and commence construction as soon as practical. The construction of the apartment buildings A1, as shown in the site plan, will be the first construction to be completed in 2016, with apartment building A2 to be completed in 2017, followed by the apartment homes and townhomes to be completed in 2018. The build-out of the single-family homes will be the last construction phase and will begin subsequent to construction of the apartment buildings and will be driven by market demand and absorption rate. And the entire construction of the site shall be completed by the end of calendar year 2020." I don't know the basis for that sequence. I don't know if that was something that was important to the planning board, Town Board.
No, I think it was partially driven by they could build the apartments more quickly and make more money on those to fund the next phases, I think was...
That...
I'm reaching here.
No, I could see that.
I believe that that was, you know, the apartments would go up quickly. They would be rented immediately and then fund the next phase of the project, if I recall.
So I don't know if any, any planning board goes forward had a particular, you know, basis for having that scenario in that particular order? Or if there's, you know, if anybody really is concerned about it? You know what I'm saying? I mean, things change, obviously, you know, markets change. So, you know, made it a hot market.
I don't recall that being, you know, it was accepted that it would be phased and that these were the logical phases and that the single-family were probably last and, you know, it would be as they had someone who was interested, if I'm recalling that correctly.
I'm not the person to ask that question, unfortunately. I wasn't particularly involved back then. It sounds logical the way Albert would take it, but...
Yeah, we definitely go back to old minutes, but really fair.
My daughter wrote.
I think he's taken that from this.
Yeah, this is actual resolution approval.
It doesn't say, I think Gord wanted to. Yeah. If I recall, we thought that was very logical because of the different types of structures and the phasing.
I guess the question I'd have is knowing that's kind of a historical approach, potentially. The new approach, would it, is there like a cadence to how you guys wanted to pursue this project? Knowing that there's already the single-family house started on Lot 8?
I know they have at least one more, I believe. They're looking to do another single-family house out there. That's one of the reasons for pushing the subdivision of the single-family portion of this with the town, with the apartments and everything. But they can't move forward with another single-family structure until the subdivision's in place and filed. And they can't close on that existing one until the subdivision's in place and filed. So that's kind of dictating the subdivision, single-family portion of this. I believe that we're going to start the construction of the townhome portion that's immediately on Lot 11. I believe we're going to be out there staking some of that in the next three or four months. So I don't know, I don't know exactly why they went from the apartments to doing a single-family house. I think that there was one individual that was, had to have one of these lots out here, which superseded getting the townhome going. But that's not unusual with Albert Ricci.
So that, where the second phase is the apartments and the townhouses, it's all one parcel?
Correct.
And then...
But, yeah, the single-family lots are...
And then the six single-family lots.
Yeah.
So tonight, our action is to approve the subdivision of those, essentially, those seven parcels?
Eight parcels.
Eight.
Six, well, two. Maybe double check.
One, two, three, four, five, six. If you're counting all the apartments to be one lot. Well, it's seven because the other, the first three lots is one yet. And you've got five, and then you've got, and then you've got 12.
Because it's not yet divided.
So that basically going to be a lot.
Yeah.
It's called Lot 1.
I drew on my map.
Any approval that I would recommend making, contingent upon legal and engineering?
Yeah.
And just so, just so I get a chance to really go through it, see if anything else has fallen through cracks.
This looks to me like what we approved previously, right? Exactly. And we spent a lot of time on, particularly the townhouses, elevations particularly. I do recall that, of what they...
Yeah, a lot of elevation renderings in there. There's plantings.
Yeah, we put them through their paces on that elevation.
Looked really nice.
Pushing, pulling. I do recall that.
Looked further refined. I was looking through it.
It was probably me.
So, and there's sidewalks on Lock Street. And as we discussed earlier, the path would be extended to the point between lots 5 and 4.
Correct.
Yes.
To Woods. So with that, any additional questions, thoughts, comments? With that, I'll make the motion if somebody wants.
Great.
I'll just do it. We'll put forth a motion to subdivide this eight-acre parcel.
Eighty point two...
Eighty point two, one-acre parcel for Phase 2 and 3 of previously approved PDD development to include apartments, townhouses, and single-family homes, subject to review by the village engineer and our attorney.
That's excellent.
I have a second.
I second. Terry's here.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Extensions? Carry it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Sure. That concludes our new business. For old businesses, it lists none, but since I and Terry weren't here, I thought we should list it on the folks are here last time on the Dollar General conversation. I did read the minutes, which were very detailed into it. And as I, I think I mentioned to you, I previously had sent a letter, there were about three, that Mary helped you send to those residents. Got one back.
10, thank you.
And I went to...
You sent us that one?
Yeah, and I went to see her. Had a nice conversation with her. And I also encouraged, I said, you know, if your neighbors are interested, check the website and come to the meeting, so.
They were all here too.
They were all here. And I did say that there was no guarantee that we're going to act. That was two meetings ago. But I'm curious, just if you wanted to share what that conversation was like.
Definitely a very sad budget.
Yeah.
It was a sad budget. I mean, it seemed like every time things came up, that would kind of come back. Well, that's not really what, you know, if we brought up, like, we don't like the look of this, this would look nicer. Yeah, but we've studied your village.
We tried and it's not within budget and we have to go higher up to request further approval for what we were looking for. And we were like, all right.
Okay, do it.
Yeah, exactly.
It was either a rubber stamp or nothing.
Right.
Yeah.
Rubber stamp.
Good job.
It looked like they had incorporated many of the things other than the, some of the architectural plans, but like the parking lot on the side and some of those. But it still required a wide opening for trucks onto Slant Street. I think that last drawing also had some kind of berm-ish kind of thing in front.
Bermish?
What, bermish?
Is it Burmese or...?
Burmese. Which is kind of firm, which we had talked about because of the elevation and view from the street. So how did, what was your sense of how they left it? Did you get a sense that they would return? Were they...
I didn't get a call.
Yeah, they were...
You did not get a call?
I don't.
I think the...
I wouldn't come back.
No. No.
It was a little intense for them, maybe.
I think the aesthetics was our concern.
Yeah.
And that wasn't part of their, as they mentioned.
Right.
They had X amount of dollars. And obviously, they know they have better aesthetics. They just didn't want to bring them.
Yeah, they showed them examples of what we'd be looking for.
Yes, I read that. I think Jamie sent one too. They showed them how bad...
I showed them the one for me and they said, yeah, it's too expensive, basically, so.
I think the one question that got, and I mentioned to Mary, is when one gentleman said, "Does the architectural review board have any teeth?" And we all said, "Absolutely." That kind of like... They didn't really push anything after that. Because they moved, they had to go in front of them, was what we recommended, and they wouldn't get it passed without a better visual.
So there was no referral then to the architecture review board?
They didn't even, it's not even a formal application, right?
No. That was, that would have been the next step.
Yeah.
And that's something I explained in the letter as well, that we were still the informant at stage. And I think, you know, I've mentioned this before, but long term, I think the village is less interested in having that become a commercial corridor and more interested, as in keeping with this development tonight, of keeping that area residential. You know, I could see multifamily, but business use cases just seem anomalous for that stretch. So, well, I guess we'll wait and see.
There's a for rent sign in front of the...
Yeah.
Yeah, just one more.
Do we know who was doing the clearing on that lot?
The owner hired some people from out of town. They dropped all the trees.
The owner of the lot currently.
They took all the walnut trees and left all the scrub left there. It looks like hell.
It does, it looks terrible.
Yeah, it was a rough...
I went there looking, I'm like, what the heck happened here?
So Dollar General has not acquired the property then?
It was all contention.
Yay.
Right.
I don't even think they knew that it was clear covered.
No.
Because when Greg mentioned it, they wanted to keep the trees.
Yeah, and last week, they said, "We'll be keeping all of the trees." And I'm like, mm.
They're gone.
One of the things, depending on, you know, if they come back or not. But my thought was that this board make a recommendation to the village board for a change in zone. But right now, it is business and there are main businesses there. But I, I'm not an attorney. But I would think that we could grandfather in existing businesses, you know, as long as they're occupying those various properties.
I'd like to keep doughboards.
Yes.
Contingent that when those turn over, they revert to residential too, instead of commercial.
And that would be my intent, that, and I, like I said, I could support single or multifamily in that area. I just don't think for the long term, within the master plan, which we're not actively doing the master plan.
Wait, but accounting?
It's coming, that would be the long-term appropriate use.
But the scale is totally...
The scale's different than like what's there now.
If you look at all those houses, they're ranches, they're cake cots, they're small, single-family homes, including the commercial properties that are there.
Exactly, that's what I was going to get at. There are certain corridors, like Fayetteville, when you come in Route 5 in Fayetteville. And that's a, that's a great example of an adaptive use of residential houses that aren't ideal for residential. And yet they've converted to a commercial that kind of is a nice transition.
Right.
So, you know, whether you take it out completely as a commercial or you dictate it so that it stays to a certain size, scale, parents, and it doesn't turn into a Dollar General corridor, it turns into, you know, okay, so if somebody wants to put an insurance agency in a house.
Right.
It's not obnoxious to the neighbors in a residential.
I agree.
You know, whereas Dollar General's a whole different, you know, category.
Is there, and Jamie's not here. Is there something, what would be the step, Mary? Maybe you know Greg, maybe you know about putting forth something like that to the village?
I think you've got to do, to really make it stand, and Jamie, I'm sure will add to this. But I think you've got to go through a study-seeker type process. You know, I think ideally, probably something where the village board says, hey, you know, planning board, we'd like you guys to study this corridor, see what comes up with. And then, you know, it gets kind of public hearings and, you know...
Yeah, it's not a quick process.
You can't just strike a pen and do it. And you may want to look at something like the code that the town of Manlius wrote for that corridor. And it dictates certain coverages, certain sizes, certain scales, or asking...
The setback is the big...
Parking location.
Setback is the big thing.
Yeah, those sort of things that can, that enable you to make something blend in and be a transition versus, you know, all of a sudden, how it's...
Crash.
Does that process start with the village board?
Yeah, I think you'd have to start something like that with the village board.
Okay, I'll talk to Jamie.
I don't know if we can make a recommendation to them.
You kind of have to be charged with it, otherwise.
We have to, yes.
It's the same as, the same as if I was the owner of a property in the village and I came in and wanted a zone change. The first thing I do is go to the village board. The village board could just look at me and say, "Thanks for coming in, have a great day." And that could be the end of it. There's no, nothing dictates that it has to be changed or, you know, even considered.
Well, if there's consensus here and support, I will call Jamie and talk to her about that. And we can discuss it at a future meeting, just to get that ball rolling.
Yeah, it's kind of the, it's that, just that one little pocket.
Right. It's one side of the street. It's, it's, yeah. I understand in a sense when the village added that area, why it stayed was probably the easiest thing at the time, to keep it basically the same.
Well, FAX has been there 300 years. I mean, obviously, that's not exaggeration, but...
There was no village.
Well, FAX was a farm and, you know, it starts...
Bob Bonney actually changed the zoning for the state firm back then.
Oh, did he?
And his condition, long before I got here, but I know the history of it. And he went for a zone change and they gave him commercial with the contingency that it was going to look like a house. And Bob Bonney followed that right through.
Yeah.
But that was how, it originally wasn't commercial. He, as far as I know, he did the zone change. And he kept to his word. He kept it looking like a house.
Yeah.
So it's got to be at least, Bob Bonney was there. It's got to be 25 to 30 years ago that they had some change went into it.
Yeah, I would agree.
What about the car wash? When did that...
I think they slipped that in there. Some people don't even remember that car wash, but there was a car wash.
I remember it, yeah.
Yeah, I do too. But I don't know how that got there. I need to get the history of that.
It's gone now.
It is gone.
I will make a point to tell Jamie Sutten this week, just to, and I'll share...
Can I joke with her?
Yeah, I'll share that with everybody else. Something else I was going to add, but I can't remember. Anyone else have any other thoughts, issues they would like to bring up or discuss?
Not at the moment.
I was telling Terry earlier, I'm going to be out of town, I think, for the next two meetings, if we have meetings. I best Terry if she's available. So I probably won't be here for the next two. If you don't have one, then no harm of hope. But just wanted to let you know that, of course, you... I just want to let you know that, of course, you can always reach out to me at any time if you have any questions. Also, I know I wanted to ask Ed, Mary has taken a new job in the clerk's office and she is temporarily serving in her current board secretary role. The village is in the process of recruiting, hiring a clerk, basically.
Congratulations.
Worth it.
Congratulations. We'll miss you.
I'll miss the boards, but I can tell you, doing three jobs between water and sewer and court. And thus today, I was like, whoa. It's hard to keep changing gears all day long, what department you're supposed to be in. So I'm sure whoever they get in will do a really good job. I'll pass everything out to Greg or him when they get here, if they get here. They better get here soon.
Tough act to follow because of your institutional knowledge.
Yeah, we managed to bring you into the meetings here and there to.
Oh, I don't mind that. I said, when, would you like me to do this minutes? They said Saturday, Sunday, before work, after work, and I'm like, okay, we'll fit it in.
Well, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
We wish you the best.
We're going to miss you.
And you will be missed here.
Thank you.
You're still in the building.
Yes, I am, you can find me in more offices.
We will, for sure. If nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. I'm on the motion. First, second.
Second. Do you want to second? All those in favor? Have a great one.
Thank you.